Lauren.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Just trying to keep everybody on the track. Triple D J.
No trouble.
Nothing move? Okay.
No.
No.
Second.
We do have Julie.
Well, hers are five H and six A, so they follow each other anyway.
It's fine.
Are you good with that? Okay.
Um, which may, or do we wanna move up to departmental report for the sheriff for the citizens' forum?
I'm making motion, I know the sheriff, to above citizens forum.
Sorry, we had a motion already.
No, we're not making a motion, I'm sorry.
Okay. Second, if you're gonna say.
There was a second.
There was a second?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Steve's second.
Alright. Uh, Ken.
Yeah.
Doug.
Yeah.
Lauren.
Yes.
Megan.
Yep.
Steve.
Yes.
Alright, um, on to citizens forum. Hearing those, we'll move on, departmental reports. Sheriff?
Yep.
How about that?
Nothing really changed. Um, we have, I talked about some concerns with Baldwin still. Um, what are the hours that is usually around for the cars out doing this?
The vehicles, the one I see the most is the gray without the front bumper. I don't know if it's a charger, I don't know.
Okay.
Those are the things, missing a front bumper.
Okay.
And I can hear it late at night if my windows are open, I'm sure Megan can hear it. They use the highway, they come into town, but I, I'm out and about on Sundays from about nine AM to three thirty, four o'clock.
Okay.
And the morning is the market, they're, they're up and down Army Post Road.
Is that on Saturday or Sunday, or?
Sunday.
Sundays?
Yeah.
Okay. That's gonna be easier to send an email out about, um, all hours of the day, I mean.
Well, I hear mainly Saturday night about midnight.
Saturday midnight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know if that's when he's getting off work or coming home or what, but, um.
They like traffic over in Los.
Okay. Yeah, like you said, I, I, I know I pulled one kid over that was calling and doing the same thing, give him a ticket, but I've said, I'll, I'll send an email to try and more for Sundays than Saturday nights. Um, me and Deb talked last week about speeders in town after school, that anything?
That was concerned.
Oh, it's, that's what I said to Deb.
Ongoing.
E- every town has the same exact concern.
Yep.
So it, it's not isolated here, but that's something that we're obviously aware of and we try to get towns going, at least, but. Um, any concerns for homecoming, when is that?
This weekend.
This weekend, anything with that at all, or?
I'm praying.
Usually.
Supposed to, I heard it was canceled, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but it's still helping.
So that would be Tuesday, then homecoming is Friday night game.
Yeah, that's, I mean, as far as like keeping, I, I don't, I can't recall any time, time to come to town, but.
Most people don't get to work that.
Not robbing, okay.
It's all day over.
That's, most towns are like that, we have a couple towns that get a little more rowdy than, definitely than Maxwell, so. Anything else?
We did have a home game last weekend and right by the concession stand to the north, it's Markville parking, but there were half a dozen cars that ended up there.
Okay.
So all the way around the inside of the, the U, surrounds the football stadium there, there's no parking on the inside all the way around.
And then, did you guys, did someone from school try to clear it out, or what happened?
There were a bunch parked there the whole game.
Okay.
You mean around the field?
Announcer?
Around the field.
There's no parking.
Correct. On the inside all the way around.
Except for the west end.
Yeah. West side as well.
Rock Creek's the same, no parking, and then it's parked right in front of it, no parking. So how do you?
It's gotta be something I, you know, probably announcement of the game would be the best decision to that, if people aren't moving, we'd more happy to come up and help with some, down, something like that, so. If it becomes a problem.
The, there's like four handicap parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there were four vehicles parked in them and none of them had handicap stickers.
Okay.
So. That's something that, uh, if it's gonna be down, it should be checked out.
Yep. I can send out an email too, if someone swings by, is it home game this weekend, obviously homecoming yet?
It will be.
Okay. Anything else? I'm trying to get that sent out to everybody, so we're all, sheriff's office on the same page with some of the complaints, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Do we go over the fire department? The city of Max- oh, sorry.
Oh, that's you.
Can we call him?
Uh, no, we cannot.
Oh, we can.
Okay.
Uh, city of Maxwell had six calls with thirty-one people, Indian Township had two, Washington Township one, Maxwell two, total of six. They had a mutual aid for one, no maintenance, no accidents, no special events, and city needs to vote on three new members. Fire department meeting, the twenty-first of August. Went over some calls that they worked on. They have the three new members listed on their new business, they wanna address that.
And her.
Isn't she?
Chief's running.
Yeah.
Move approval of the three members.
Second.
Discussion. There you go, got a vote. Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Motion passes. And includes fire, we go on EMS. EMS had twelve page outs for Maxwell. Maxwell responded denied. Certified EMS with one of three, city of Maxwell five, Indian Township three, Washington Township four. Uh, EMS monthly meeting had four attendant, in attendance. CQI was completed, by story coming back, sir. Um, they're asking about plans for an ambulance, because they are making presence at the football, home football games.
Ken, what is the, uh, uh, noted here about plans for ambulance?
Uh, never heard of that.
Okay, so I can find out what that might do.
They still have an ambulance.
What's that?
They still have an ambulance.
Yeah. We still have one, and we got the.
I thought we were getting rid of the ambulance, which is why we bought the.
So maybe that's what they're planning, maybe that's what their plans are.
Trying to get rid of it now, I don't know.
Oh.
I understand, I understand. The total EMS page outs, and I, the only reason I'm going over this is we go with budgets, we need to know how many boards from each jurisdiction area.
Right.
And they have twelve page outs for Maxwell, we responded to nine. And then, when you add up the ci- the city, Indian Creek, Washington.
Out you twelve, or?
That adds up to twelve. Uh.
So that one responded to nine, how did you get twelve?
The, apparently we didn't respond to three, but do we know which three we didn't respond to? And, and does it make a difference? Probably not, because we just total up how many calls there were for each jurisdiction.
The only thing I could think of Steve would be is they were called and then got down for Indian or something, that'd be the only thing.
Or maybe didn't have anybody to respond. Okay. Twelve and twelve adds up, so we're okay. Thank you.
We also have an application.
Application for a new member. Um, check here, supposed to join EMS. Possibly will have the class fees covered by high school D M classes. Little trouble?
Second.
Discussion.
That's remittition. Yeah. Cast off. I'm sure the EMS chief will keep them on limited duty until they've spoiled.
Sounds good. Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to library. Looks like. They had a total of a hundred thirty-seven books checked out, forty-three movies, total attendance was one eighty, fifty-one children, a hundred and twenty-nine adults. Ridges had a total of a hundred and forty-five remaining on the whole. Um, computers with three adults and sixteen children. They have early out events, begin school session, movie on the second Wednesday of the month, activity in craft STEM will be on the third Wednesday of the month. Uh, board seats reassigned, maybe the sharp is now the president, approved flooring feet. Uh, policy binder updated, also uploaded in the computer. Upcoming, hopefully a library renovation, into September or October, new floors, paints, lines. They have two enclosure. But it's been prepped, programs also being scheduled. Do an open house when models finished, they're asking to go and do an open house between the two.
What do you think Deb?
What do you think Deb? It's gonna be junking in here by then.
It'll be a while before everything gets done here, but I think it's a good idea to at least invite the community to come in, see what was done.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yes. That was tentative.
Uh. So whenever the library gets done, we can.
Sometime after October.
Okay.
Um, public library minutes. Most of it was covered with original. Expecting a virtual grant announcement. See original sound, go over there. Do all the public works. Uh, the streets should be here for seal code at any time, uh, nothing new with the parks. Water tower's been cleaned and inspected, fixed a broken vein on Fifth and Maxwell, replaced a leaking water line at seventy-nine B. Sewer, pumps, and restation have been inspected, still doing yearly cleaning and inspecting. Scott's taking the grade one wastewater class already, and has gotten okay, D N R to take his grade two for.
Doesn't probably usually include the number of gallons treated in.
Yep.
Number of gallons sold. I know it's gonna be way off because of the two leaks.
Yeah, it's just main, and that would, would mostly forget it. Forget it.
Question about second and Metcalf, I noticed there's a new drainage tube, pretty exciting one going on. Have a very long side of the inner, probably I would guess.
North, south?
Um, and it's going east from the point.
It's a south soccer field.
Okay.
I was wondering if that's something we did, or is that something Home Order did?
Something we did.
Something we did?
Yeah, actually broke and fell in.
Perfect, okay.
And for Tony, right there at the entrance, let's see your housing, we've got a sinkhole that every so often drops out, it needs to be repatched again, about the size of a little volleyball hole. Just keeps eating.
It's in, it's in coal somewhere.
Alright, moving on to the city clerk. Odds went well, considering we were at a different location. Um, okay, they were working well together, few bumps in the road with part of the utility bu- uh, billing program, they're getting there. And it's started a slow move back to city hall. Come up with a few new problems, but they were expected, one of those is filing cabinets. Uh, found some used filing cabinets. And for some additional funding to cover those. Basically, the spacing in here.
County gives them away all the time. We could use twelve thirty to give them free.
So look, um, Iowa State surplus didn't even like. Don't look at the Facebook Marketplace.
What is, what do you think does the minimum amount of storage type that you need filing cabinet to get by?
We were thinking at least two. We were like three, but.
Two, five drawers?
Two five drawers.
Pretty cool, or you like the horizontal ones or the plonked?
It, it's gonna have to be something, if you look, I've got, the re- our normal filing cabinets come back to my chair almost.
Okay.
And then, the other ones are only eighteen inches deep, so they would work like when Dee and I were here.
So thanks for a couple eighteen inches instead of the probably what?
Thirty inches, thirty.
Thirty. The side opening ones, uh, have to be, uh, attached to the wall, because when you pull the drawer out, you're getting counterbought.
They're gonna be tipping.
Out. And, uh, it's a real tipping issue, so, uh, I'll have to make sure that we do get it attached. I thought we were going to have one desk over there, one desk over here, and the filing cabinets at that. My.
But the map thing is going to have to go there.
I thought that was gonna go into a storage.
Gotta get that first.
Huh?
You have to get that first.
Well, I wouldn't leave it over there until we get it.
That's not wrong. Tony keeps trying to pick me out.
Well, Tony, well, Tony's not in charge of the city government.
So we do have some space out at, uh, the new water treatment plant, and a few did air condition and maintain area. Discuss that with Tony, we got some room, but he'd still like to see some smaller, smaller space taken up versus what we were going there. Um, Deb's been working diligently on that, she's started filing some of those old papers and getting those out, it's helped out, we have a secretary here to help with that, so. It's, uh.
Are we still thinking about trying to move stuff electronically?
We're working on it, she started, uh, several filings, moving into electronic, uh, but it's, it's a long, long process.
It's a long process.
It's probably eighty years worth of paper, so.
So is there anything that the council needs to make a decision on? Or just, what's the mayor?
Um, city clerk?
Got money on the budget report, or the renovation, or?
Where do we come out on the renovation?
I don't know where I would go.
Not an idea.
I haven't looked, I mean, between training and moving and.
So if there's.
I just want.
If there's additional, we'll use that for filing cabinets, um, otherwise we'll come back and ask for something else to rearrange.
I mean, if all spells, we could put our big filing cabinets back there.
Pardon?
I said if all spells, we can put the, uh, the big filing cabinets back there for a while.
Maybe at the corner?
Cause we had that desk back there for what?
Hold on, Doug. Uh.
I have a question on the budget report. Community beautification total is negative five thousand five ten fifty, what is that? You know?
Actually, that's in the wrong place.
Okay.
That should be down in the economic.
Development total.
Okay.
And?
I thought I got that fixed.
Under stormwater total, uh, there's a twenty-six hundred dollar expenditure, is that a, an expenditure, uh, from working on, uh, uh, Woodlong?
That one, I think, is where we had to down on second and Metcalf.
And what?
Second Metcalf for that one fell in. The one that Ken was just talking about.
Boom, it was collapsed.
Okay.
Good thing.
It was, it's how I was just talking about. Uh, yeah, is that a? Road maintenance issue, or is that a, uh, stormwater issue?
Well, they put a culvert in, and it'd be stormwater, they're trying to get rid of.
It's towards the river, doesn't it?
No.
I think I rolled off of the road just as it.
I rolled off the road in the ditch, and it's dragged out of the system, out of the ditch. Okay.
One last thing, I know you're drowning and stuff, but are we any closer on the FEMA from twenty twenty?
We're done with that.
Okay.
We got our last step.
And we're still twenty-three thousand negative, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you, uh, draw up a resolution, uh, for action next month? Moving money from the emergency trust to zero out the FEMA wind disaster. We tax every year and put money in the emergency trust to pay for these kinds of emergencies. Now would we know how much we ended up having to pay? Now would be a good time to, uh, balance the accounts.
The thing I was thinking is also, we have a FEMA that has twenty-eight thousand in it. We could move that. As long as it's moved, used for the same thing, like a disaster, we can use it.
Okay, do, do the resolution and move it from the FEMA, uh, to zero out the, uh, wind disaster and any funds that are left over. Uh, we should be able to move up into the emergency trust. Cause that's what, that emergency trust is for, and we could zero out both of them. Sound reasonable?
Sure.
Yeah.
And, in that same resolution, if you would, uh, include sixty cents into the wastewater treatment facility, uh, from the general fund. We can zero out that account also.
Who's the capital fund project store? It's twenty-one fifty-eight negative.
That was the fifth street storm service.
And capital funds can run negative until it's rev- it's resolved. And if that would be resolved as part of Baldwin Street, uh, what would happen?
Yeah.
We won't?
No, Baldwin, it's part of Baldwin, it's gonna go all up that street.
Yeah. Clear. Uh, engineers report, it's not here today. Baldwin Street moved destruction, the C V B G reapplications in process. Summary of alternatives and decision process for current design, I discussed the. They need to resubmit the C V B G application for the water main portion of the project, coordinating with Simaree Tori. Acquisition of dehuesment for the outage, outlet drainage. And submit the final plans to the I D O T and plan ahead of the planning date. Water treatment plant, waste charge, discharge wastewater discharge permit. Final plans anticipated to be required by twenty twenty-seven, scope of fee for design of discharge pump stations, request by city is available, we submitted for consideration. September, I'm looking there, uh, I haven't seen it yet. And Woodlong stormwater study, survey field work is complete, base maps are in development, preliminary design will begin in September. The Rock Creek Ridge Estates flat two, no requests for progress from the owner. Pulling Hills Mobile Home Park, no movement from the owner to evaluate their options. Part of Iowa Trail, grant application submitted, response is expected in September. Uh, minimal understanding was updated for the city's request, submitted story coming for consideration. And it's reviewed, and has some questions and items to discuss before finalizing the agreement, they'll be reaching out to the city to discuss. Parks Open Spaces Board. Um, members of the board are working, continuing on their projects, Olive Flower fundraiser, Tree City USA requirements. Application to the Fall Community Forestry Grant, pre-A B was submitted, but not granted funding. Uh, the S C C F grant, uh, received word that our application for the major grant for the water tower park was not accepted. It suggests that we apply for a smaller grant, which application is due September thirtieth. Members are now part of the community visioning committee to participate in a planning project for the city from the I D O T, I D N R, trees forever. This planning will develop plans for trails, transportation routes, sidewalks, and some parks. Results will be, uh, budgets, community solicit bids, and donations for developing improvements to our city. Small projects we hope to complete this calendar year, a few more garbage can locations, such as cemetery, we solved the problem of people parking in inappropriate places due to dog park. Special tree planting, perhaps root trees along the bike trail, or is planning meetings in September or October regarding code amendments for the Tree City USA application. Applying for the small S C C F grant to be used for the city park later. Joanie, anything else on that?
Um, let's see, regarding the Fall Community Forestry Grant, um, that we didn't make, I called to get comments, and I do have those, if you want copies of those, I can give it to you. Um, we need, um, more specific, uh, details on our maintenance. So I was going to check with Tony and see if I can, you know, if he can say he will water every Thursday, or, you know, they just wanted more specific things. They needed more, um, environmental impact, they gave the example. They gave the example of the trees will shade the bike trail. Uh, the trees will, um, shade parts of the park. So I guess I was too brief. And so I'm learning. You know, tree maintenance details, so I thought I'd check with him and see what he does now. See if I can fix that. And they have, they don't give us points because of the Tree City thing. And we're still working on that, in fact, well, you have a thing there. And, um, see the details of Tree City, environmental impacts. Oh, and because we've received the grant before and in recent time, and they said, you know, it's not very fair, but that's how it works. That if somebody is brand new, um, funds are limited and so they, you know, they get higher score on that. And there's nothing we can do about that. For the Story County Community Fund Grant, uh, you see, we didn't get it for the Water Tower Park, but, um, I had some notes from Warren and Kathy suggesting maybe, um, handicap swing for the playground. And that was, the estimate is like two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars or something like that. So I thought I'd ask for two thousand two hundred dollars. One of the things they wanted was if there are any, um, collaborating, people or organizations, so I did reach out to Mother's Club to see if they ever support that, and they said yes. And so we're gonna try, they meet Sunday, so I was gonna try and get a letter out to them saying, how would you like to support this? And, um, do you know any else, one else who would like to support it? So we can have some people who want to be involved besides just us. So hopefully beef that up. Um, I haven't heard any more from the visioning. And so far, the board meeting possibilities are eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and none of them match. So I'll just have to wait and see when I can get enough people to be there. And if you have any other questions?
I've got a question on the bike trail. And might refresh my memory, cause I might blank it out, but why are they not going up over the old railroad track? Because that's a natural nature trail.
Part of the roadways. They would have to go up and clear that area again. And this is a plan that was developed well before my time, it's been in development for probably ten years. The bike trail path and they, they decided, because there's also private usements up there.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering, because that makes sense. Natural nature trail.
Mean from, if I could. You mean from Main Street to, just straight across?
No, from the other trail.
The Marage.
The West End. Where it would, it would go back through that property.
Yeah, and then.
I don't know, but now the park there's a property.
See the grade that, uh, is, uh, on the east side of town to get from, uh, ground level to the top of the railroad right of way? And how long that approaches? They would have to do the same thing on each end, which means essentially that all the dirt would have to be taken out, all the trees. And it would no longer be, cause by the time you take all that dirt out, the trees are gone too. You've gotta ramp it to get up to it, which would take out.
There's cell phone pylons about every thirty-four feet too, all the way through that thing.
There's what?
Railroad pylons, that's how they brought the dirt.
Are they real?
Yeah, it's cell phone for the driven in all the way through.
It just seems like a natural place.
The planning group years ago felt that it would be advantageous to bring the bikers into town, uh, so that they would be closer to the park for, uh, park utilization to, uh, log stunts, uh, to get, uh, whatever, as opposed to being way down south where the railroad is. That decision was made years ago.
So they are going to come through the city and not go through that area that was.
Come on Broad Street. It's gonna be on Broad Street.
Okay, that's, that was another question I had, that I think. I don't remember.
We own the business, discussion in action on referral to parks and open spaces on proposed amendments to the Maxwell City Code regarding trees.
So I've been going through City Code, all the portions that, um, speak to trees. And I'm trying to figure out what language we need to put in there. Some of it's just.
Put in there for what purpose?
For the Tree City USA. To try and meet all their criteria. They seem to want something really specific on who has jurisdiction over the trees. And pretty specific on, and I think a lot of it we have. It's just that, um, our section, um, on trees doesn't give a purpose, you know, like the purpose of this section is. And so I found a model ordinance where we could just add a section there. And then there are a few other spots where we can just beef it up a little bit. I'm kind of the point, to the point where if they add new applications for Tree City for two thousand and twenty-four, I think you hand them in in December. From what the person I talked to today. And so if we can get our stuff done by December, I thought about just, um, I gathered all of our code sections together, sending that, cause evidently they review all of those and see if they've done it. And then what they can say is, well, you need to fix this, okay, good. And so it's more specific in that, and I'm not guessing what has to be done. So otherwise, I think we have a, a lot of things covered, but I don't know if we have to put in an actual section that says, or something that says every year we will celebrate Arbor Day. Things like that. Cause that seems to be a really important criteria. So it's just trying to figure out what they want. So as I said, I kind of, how can I put this together, submit it, and then they say, well, you need to fix this.
If we have something in the ordinance that says we're going to celebrate Arbor Day, the best place to put that would be in the mayor's responsibility that, uh, uh, one of the mayor's responsibilities to, uh, uh, declares Arbor Day annually.
Is there something like that?
Yeah, there are lists of things that the mayor is supposed to do. So, I'm, keep, keep, keep looking at it and identifying uh, the various pieces that they require and anything that we can't find or concurrent ordinance, uh, I would say that, uh, we try to get it, uh, on for the November, uh, meeting. Uh, and I have.
I was trying to open for October, yeah.
I also recommend that you reach out to, reach out to them and ask them, cause they probably had an example.
Yeah, that's, I have, uh, modeled ordinances.
Okay. Of what they're looking for?
Well, that's like where I got that purpose language, and I thought, oh, well, let's put this at the beginning of the trees, section of the code. And, um, but we need a lot of it, and so I kind of, well, maybe we don't need to do as much as, um, I thought. There, there is some that might be in, um, public works that has to be more defined, you know, and they will do this. Okay. So.
Well, we could certainly shoot for October, it's too late, this is September. But at a, at a minimum, we have ordinance language in November, uh, and it's published, which would have to be published in October to get it on the November meeting.
Well, my hope was to get it to cancel the proposals and then publish in October for November as, and, uh, pass it as, what do they call it? Waiting the second and the third reenance and just have one meeting.
Yeah, it should be non-controversial. Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, moving on, discussion in action on trick or treat.
I did talk to the Methodist Church people, you know, they do their big celebrations that night or trick or treats. Or not, like tonight, I guess is what they call it. They prefer the thirty-first, if that is what, which is Halloween night itself.
I'm making notes, should we do it thirty-first?
That was exactly.
Then that.
All right, discussion?
No.
Very good. Four?
Yes.
Three?
Yep.
Two? Yeah. See?
Yes.
The?
Yes.
Most careful. October thirty-first. We're at six o'clock.
Oh.
Is it just?
Five is, there's normal hours, yeah.
Five, yeah, five, seven. Five to seven.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Well, and you gotta get, some people time to get on their good dress.
Six to eight.
I think there's normal time of six to eight.
Thanks, Joey. Good work.
Thanks, Joey.
Moving on, discussion in action on livestock permit for sixty-five thousand seven hundred three hundred twenty-fifth street. So you're asking for two bulls, six Capri goats, six O nine sheep? The one thing I saw was that we're supposed to attach the explanation of the variance, uh, for balancing your animals with forage to the application. So that's one piece I see missing on this one.
What, what do we need for that?
It says in here, balancing your animals, it says attach an explanation of any variance from the attached balancing your animals with your forage. Uh, document attached to the housing space guidelines for livestock document for type of loss livestock that you propose.
To read.
The last piece, last piece of his application.
So the one saying that he's supplementing feed, attach it. Doesn't mean.
But I think, I don't, I don't know what the balancing your animals with forage is.
The balance of your animals with your forage is a publication. It's in, it's in quotes, it's a publication. And, uh, since you're going to be feeding your animals and they're just have an exercise area, that's what your application said, right? You want to be hauling in feed, but they do have an exercise area.
You supplement your animal feeding with their.
Yeah. Which is what the, uh, that meets, uh, the requirements, uh, in the ordinance. And you have enough buildings there. Six goats, six sheep, each require a hundred and fifty square feet of enclosure. Well, there's no problem, there you go, plenty of buildings. And the exercise yard, uh, requires a three hundred square feet, uh, for each. Uh, which again.
Yeah.
We've got plenty there. So, uh, I, little approval of the, uh, request, something to, uh, comply to the guidelines. I'm sorry.
Discussion?
What was the, this is what I was looking for? The per acre for each animal?
Right here.
In the guidelines here.
Exercise area.
It's a three-page document from the USDA, it's supposed to come with it.
So two.
And the bulls would be two times that. And that's a, an acre there, that's a half an acre there. They're shown behind the building, that's a half an acre.
Send your pasture, that you have beans, that'll be a, go back to where your cows can live.
Yeah, yep.
And the goat.
The two bulls, they're, they're, we're not gonna keep any cows there. Or summertime, so they're gonna be on the pasture.
They've got lots of individual areas. So for the number of animals.
They need to go somewhere separate, because every time they're close around, they'll, they'll, they won't go back with the mob.
Oh, the humans?
Well, no, they're not, they're watching. They might get back with the cows.
They'll go back with the cows at a time.
Well, no, they got other ones there.
So if we have cows across the street, it's no big deal?
No.
Do you not have any bulls coming over there?
They do up in the gate, let me know.
I know. I don't chase no cows now.
You have cows there?
I know.
We put the.
When it comes to that crap.
We have one day, we got there with one buddy. Three weeks, that's. I might actually have babies. If I had a bottle of each one?
I'd do that, I'd take that one.
It'll never be successful.
Yeah. That was a vendor, wasn't it?
Yeah.
He still won't come to the morning.
Any more decisions?
Just.
Any more decisions?
I don't believe so. Nope.
Very good.
Really missed that shade on there though.
Doug?
Yes.
Kim?
Yeah.
You're done for.
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Most careful.
See, Joey, that tree there. Right?
I have plastic going to be done.
I got some ready for the girl there right here.
Yeah, I want to.
Don't we all?
It's in those fancy ditch series.
So the next one's by discussion in action on a two thousand dollar set aside for the visioning grant. As Joey was talking, uh, we recently applied for the community visioning grant. Uh, this grant provides for, uh, basically planning for parks and trails.
Thanks, guys.
The issue.
There's a question, we're gonna have to do the play for the prepared paper from that. Look.
That's one, I'll see the question.
Ask them.
Just go see them.
Okay, I'll stop then. So one of the requirements of that grant is that the city has two thousand dollars set aside as, uh, support for the grant. The money does not need to be expended towards the grant, towards the purposes other than what the city deems fit, which is needed designated as for the purpose. other than what the city deems fit, which is needed designated as for the purpose of community appreciation.
Well, we have money in the budget under economic development and community expenses. Very good, so there we go. We don't have anything under community verification, we do have economic development. And we have, so this is gonna provide a plan if we get the money. And planning is an accepted use of the economic development money. Right, Doug?
Yeah.
So I would move that we earmark $2,000 from economic development to budget for this amount.
Second.
Further discussion?
I believe that's the one we've got money bumped to 7,500 diversity, so.
So it's gonna be more than what we have in the budget. We got plenty.
Yeah.
Here you go. Megan?
Yep.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Lauren?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Most cares. Uh, discussion action on the 2023 legislative changes to ordinances.
So in reading the letter, what there are, what this would do is update our ordinance to include changes from the legislature. And Deb, does it also, would there also be a separate charge for getting any of our amendments that we've done the last year into the printed sheets that we would then have?
Yeah, there would be a, a separate charge for those, but they could do it at the same time.
Yeah. So I move that the mayor be authorized to sign the order forms for the legislative changes and that we require all pages to be dated from locally adopted amendments. At the same time.
Second.
Further discussion? Here you go.
Yeah.
Doug?
Yeah.
Lauren?
Megan?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Most cares as well. All right, discussion action on solar energy ordinance.
We are being asked to, whether or not we want to move forward with a language in hold hearings. Is that what we're being asked to do?
Yes.
Do you see that? Well, I read through the seven pages. Six pages. Solar energy system regulations. And there's some really good ideas in there. If you go to the fourth page of the packet, where it's talking about permitted SES. SES is a small or a solar energy system. Yes?
Yes.
Is it maybe just a small, an S, SES?
Well, there's a large SES and a small SES. A larger one would be somebody that's putting out a whole bunch to sell.
This permitted deals with the small SES except for D.
Say that again, I got lost.
Well, this is, I, I get lost in this one also. It says committed SES. Well, SES is neither large nor small. It's just solar energy system.
Correct.
And so what they're saying is that solar energy systems, whether large or small, are permitted in all zoning districts within the city of Maxwell. Is that really what they're saying, or are they?
That's what they're intenting.
Or is they're saying that the small ones are permitted in all zoning districts?
I was at the meeting when they were discussing this. Because this was pushed by me to get something going, which is a secondary issue now. Let me mention this before we get too much further. The urgency is off as far as I'm concerned. I did submit at their request and go ahead and file an application for putting solar panels where you want them. So I submitted six feet from my back line and 10 foot from my sideline, which is what the mayor and Steve and I kinda put together at one point a couple months ago, expecting it to be denied. It came back granted, approved. So the urgency, if we have some questions, I, I do think back to what the, the point was. They wanted, the planning and zoning committee thought it'd be best to have uniform requirements for every zoning district. Whether you're R1 or a state or whatever else. So that's the language or that's the purpose, the angle that they are pursuing this from.
So is last page their draft of the proposal? To our code?
Yes, I believe so.
The last page?
So it starts with letter A. It starts with letter A, the SES shall be setback not less than one foot from next to your primary of the roof. So I think.
There you go. I'm trying to find what you're talking about.
I lost the A you're talking.
I lost the A.
Page four of our pamphlet, I'm, it's the very first.
Oh, the light. All right, I'm sorry, it's, it is the first, or the last three pages. I was.
Yeah, yeah.
I was.
The last three.
Yep, so starting with 165 double X solar energy system.
Okay.
That's the, that's the entire.
The whole thing, okay.
Yeah. Starting there and going back through page seven. That's page three goes back through page eight naturally. I, there are a lot of good things in. Doug's, Doug had an issue that, of where to put it. And there are a lot of things in here that I think makes sense in an ordinance such as if it's not generating electricity, hasn't generated electricity for a year, then it's abandoned and it can be required to be removed or it goes through a nuisance process. Well, yeah, that kind of makes sense. You don't want so many things to be hanging around. That there's no lighting other than required safety lights. And that there, you don't have reflection off of it that irritates your neighbor. Because I can see where somebody puts up one of these things and then it shines in somebody's bedroom window with the, when the sun's shining on it. So there's, yeah, lots of, lots of good things in here, but then there's also things that I just, that need to be clarified a little. Under 21 A, sub paragraph, or paragraph A, sub paragraph three, sub paragraph D. It says an SES shall not be located in any required buffer. What the fuck?
Just like, if you think about where the river is, it goes through Skunk River and you see all that grass there before it is cornfield?
Is that what?
That's a buffer.
Yep, that's what they're referring to, then that's, that's great. So are, are they referring to a buffer yard, like a side yard, a rear yard? You know, there are things in here that something need to be cleared up. Says access pathways for an SES shall be provided in accordance with all applicable building fire and safety codes. I think what they're trying to say is that the SES has to be at least 10 foot away from another building. But because I couldn't think of what else to talk about when they say access pathways. And the next one talks about SASs. Well, I think that's just typical when it should be SES. You get to the last page and it says it's residential estate, residential suburban in R1 districts, the SES is restricted in size to no more than the allowed carryup for detached accessory structures on a specific property. So we've gone round and round on how much how big an accessory building can be. And there have been variances galore granted on them. So that's great for the RERs and R1, well, what about the R2 and R3? So, yes, I like the ordinance. I, I think it's gonna be, there's a lot of good thoughts in it. And if our building inspectors review this, since they are administering the enforcement of the ordinance and they figure that they know how to enforce it and we get some things cleaned up and clarified, then the only issue we have is where do we put it? And if you look at our zoning ordinance, maybe we just create a new section after the general regulations or toward the end, just add it on at the end of the zoning regulations, I don't know. But that would be the other thing we need to talk to our code people and the attorney to figure out the best way to do this.
Okay, planning and zoning, I believe and I'm sure is of the opinion that our building inspector is doing what he has to do, but that may not be what we think he needs to do. So at some point that, we need to look at what our contract says with the building inspector and then is that exactly what we want the building inspector to do? They are not enforcers. From what, you know.
The question of their contract, they are. And so we would need to change their contract. Their contract says that they enforce the zoning laws.
All right, that's, that's where I think there's some disagreement of planning and zoning's thoughts.
Well, I don't care what planning and zoning thinks because the contract is what we signed. And the contract says that they are the zoning enforcement.
Okay.
And if they don't, then what?
Well, if they don't, they've broken the contract. And we need to do something about it.
All right, the second thing that I want to mention here, they took a section out that we don't see here. And that section says if somebody has solar panels, the neighbor can't plant something that will shade. And they, they took that out.
But what they did leave in here.
Absolutely not.
What, what they did leave in here is a notification to the person who is doing the solar energy that if they want to avoid getting shaded, they need to get easements from adjacent property owners. That's the proper.
That's the ultimate, okay.
That if I were to put a solar panel on my property and I was concerned that my neighbor might plant something that would shade it, then I should negotiate with my neighbor to get an easement so that that would not happen.
Okay, because that was something they took out.
That language is in here.
That is, okay.
That, that person, that they have no right to the solar, but they have to develop easements.
So that was the thing that they were through that.
Doesn't that sound reasonable?
Yeah, see, the only, the only right way to go, is it gonna work? Is the neighbor going to? And the neighbor doesn't have to.
The neighbor's not going to.
They don't have to give the easement.
To do that, I'm not saying they're right, but then it's up to them.
Right.
Yep.
That's a back end of the property owner.
The only right way for the city to go about it, yes.
Yeah. We're not involved. It's between property owners. And they could get an easement to, that gives them the sunlight and I give the neighbor a thousand dollars, everybody's happy, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I did see the easement in there and I thought that was a good way, I didn't realize that they had dropped the other thing out.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, except that I, isn't that on the last page where it's skittering out?
Yes.
Yeah. I saw that it was skittering out with a lot of.
That's completely pushing more on the chain.
How many pages do you have?
I don't have that.
I don't have the whole book.
I'm just, you mentioned 721.
We have four.
We have short papers.
We got four pages.
Well, what do you?
There you go.
So we don't have the whole story.
All right, so it's.
They should have it if you have it.
Huh?
They should have it if you have it.
Well, this is the one printed from home.
Yeah, I printed from home.
We'll see if it's in here. If it's not, you're in trouble.
Good, I get to go home then.
So current action or this is go action?
No action. Really? Because all I do is copy it in, I, and then I copied it for out. I said this, it's okay. It's all right.
It's, it's the copy machine, it's not.
It's gone over it.
It was Friday, they were in the middle of moving, my printer didn't always work.
You're fine. Maybe it ran out of paper, maybe they're still in there and it's the next.
You know, it did run out of paper during part of my printing.
True. That's just inverted.
So if we think that it's worth spending the time on, then a committee to work with somebody from PMZ to come up with language that we can then give to Iowa codifications and the attorney so that they could be reviewing and massaging. So I'd be willing to work on that committee.
I would, but I probably shouldn't.
Well, you should because you have experience.
Okay.
You can ask me.
All right. Now I'm gonna go ahead now that I have permission regardless.
Well, yeah. The, the proper way for this to have been handled. Well, yeah, the the proper way for this to have been handled is since there wasn't something clear in the ordinance, uh you would come to the city council and ask them to make a determination. The city council, reviewing the ordinance, would make a determination that, yeah, six feet because that's what the R three district says, the R one doesn't say anything, but, or the R two district says, R one doesn't say anything, it's silent, so six foot is reasonable. And then the city council would approve that. And they can make determinations on the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Okay? If somebody doesn't like that determination, they can appeal it to the board of adjustment. They can then appeal the determination of the council to the board of adjustment. So there's an appeal route, there's a hearing route, all kinds of things. So if any if anybody has a question about the ordinance, then really the best thing to do would be, or you know, the last thing, last action to do if the staff can't figure it out or there is only enforcement officer or whatever, is come to council, let the council make a determination, and that's it.
Which is what I should have done.
Yeah.
But I started it and then I was told you have to use a setback on the building, forty foot is what I was gonna have to back. I didn't do it. It's only costing me about fourteen thousand dollars to do it again. Yes, so I learned. Yeah, that's costing me more to put it on the ground.
Shouldn't the company had, you had installed it, shouldn't they have been aware that different cities have different ordinances?
That's why they stay out of it.
And he's moving it from a roof.
He's moving it from roof.
And to the backyard, right?
I know that, but I didn't wait, weren't you told that you couldn't do it on the ground?
I was told that I'd have to use setbacks for buildings on the ground at that time.
Actually, probably what we should do to have this item on the agenda is uh I move that the setbacks for uh accessory structures in the uh all residential districts be the same as the setback established in the R two district. Which is six feet.
Oh, but a solar system does not take up.
It's still an accessory structure.
Where if I had an accessory.
It does not take up like a concrete, takes up something about the water runoff or something like that. Wasn't that part of the second?
Imperious areas and.
Right, and a solar is on poles that you wouldn't add that. So they can't be, it's it's not apples and apples.
The edge, um the so of the accessory structure can be no closer than six feet to a property. Which is.
Which is what was approved.
Which was approved, but if let's go ahead and as a council make a determination which then resolves this for any other case.
For the next person, right?
So we have a motion.
Sorry?
Hang on a second, further discussion.
You under.
I do, I do, because I too own solar. And I guess my question is what is different about having a solar system on the ground which is permanent structure? It's not movable, you're not gonna go change it or around in your yard as any other building that you would have to, like if he were to put up shed or something else, it's still a permanent structure. It should still follow the same.
Right, which is what that motion does, that's what it's talking about. So accessory building is.
A shed can be six foot from the property line.
Yes.
Seven foot.
What?
Seven foot.
We'll see which one, which one of those is correct.
Fifteen foot.
Eight?
Seven.
Six, ten. Eight?
You're, you were approved at?
Six.
Six.
Six and ten, right?
Six and ten from the side.
One, sixty-five, R two. District. Lauren, there's what they approved. Upper left-hand corner. Minimum yard requirements.
There you have it.
No, that's the panel also. That's the northwest corner of my property is all that is, it's not a lot.
Seven foot is the side, not the rear.
Are you talking about the rear?
Rear.
What is the rear?
Twenty-five foot permissible accessory buildings, no minimum requirement when adjacent to an alley, otherwise six feet.
So did you say rear?
Yeah.
I didn't catch that one.
Oh, yeah, I said the same as the R two district's requirements for the rear.
I'll set it up for the rear.
Yeah. Another question for the city.
So that's just R two?
No, this would apply to all residential.
Everything, there's nothing written in R one now, so which is part of the problem.
Wait a second.
Here, no further discussion, I have a second.
He did.
I did, I have a second. Lauren?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
See.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And you should write that up that it is the determination of the council. So that if anybody wants to appeal it, they know what they're appealing.
So next one's mine, discussion on actual water rate increase. Now, this is never a popular idea. The issue is that we have a hundred eighty-six thousand dollar project in the books, due in three years, less than three years. We don't have funds to cover that at the moment and projected funds will be close, but not enough to sufficiently carry it. I would like to propose a three dollar um water cost, so just to get it tapped to the monthly, three dollars.
On the base fee.
On the base fee, not on the on the water itself, the water cost, because they buried my my homes. So this is a permanent structure that will come in and be replaced and will eventually be moved and will eventually have to take care of it.
What are we doing?
The wastewater discharge from this water plant.
Are we getting uh a loan from the state revolving fund?
There is a potential for a loan for this, um but that's part of our issue. We are heavily loaned out right at the moment.
Not in the water, uh the water is a separate enterprise and it has a hundred and sixty thousand dollar cash balance. And so.
I'm sure it's a hundred and twenty.
Let's look at page three or four of the GURPS account. GURPS of the cash. I looked at it earlier, right, certainly put yourself wrong, hundred and forty thousand, you're right, that was twenty thousand. Hundred and forty thousand dollar cash balance. And uh our expenditures uh and revenues, uh we, last month we spent thirteen, or we spent twenty uh two, uh we received thirteen. But overall, in the year, the way we budget, we receive as uh more than what we spend. Able each year for capital projects. So that hundred and forty thousand dollars uh is our cushion for projects. I, you may not be aware of this because you haven't been around for an entire year, but we sit down this time of year and look at sewer, water, and garbage and see uh what we've spent the previous year, what projects we have coming, and establish rates that we then adopt with the budget coming up uh in uh March. And we have uh two rates for each garbage, for each water and sewer. A variable rate, which is what uh it costs for, like on the water side, what it costs to produce the water based on usage, based on usage. And then a fixed cost, that's what you're talking about, uh which includes capital projects. And so I think the right thing to do would be to work that in with uh the rate setting. And if we decide that we need to implement it before uh June, July first of next year, uh we could certainly do it, but let's look at, let's continue the process of rate review uh that we do every year and in that capital project. If it turns out that we have to pay out cash, uh then yes, we're gonna have to come up with the uh funds. If it's a state revolving fund, uh then uh you know, the amount of money that we would need, might be considerably less, so because we have longer time period to pay it off and the interest rate's very low. So it's it's appropriate to be talking about it now and Deb needs to uh pull together the reports from last year, uh because it's that time of year again.
Turn over there.
So one of the things that I've seen of this is, so we are in September, I don't remember a month that we haven't had a water main break this summer. We haven't hit the cold weather yet. And we've been averaging between.
We've hit dry weather.
So last once was the lightest cost of seven thousand dollars in water main replacement costs. Uh we've approached almost thirty for one. So those costs uh cut into that on a monthly, they haven't been cutting into that on a monthly basis. So if you guys could please consider that, would you go into your um into your meeting to?
What says you guys write that? The mayor's always been along with, I think it's Alvin and I.
Okay.
Uh the mayor had uh sat down as a committee, finance committee, and uh worked through the rates, right though?
With Tian's help?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll work on getting that scheduled, though.
And, yeah. Yeah, what was the deal down here on Main Street, or was that a name or?
No, that wasn't a name, that was a service connection, I'm here.
The uh um Gable Inn years ago uh replaced uh their tap with a copper pipe. And when they ran the tap, they came out of the pipe, made a bend, and then made another bend into uh their uh building. And both the Legion Hall and Gable Inn are on the same tap, which is no longer permitted. Well, with that bend, as sharp as it was, the water going around that wore the pipe and so it had a hole to the pipe that was huge. Yeah. And uh so it had to be dug up and replaced. When they, when they replaced it, uh on behalf of the Legion, I had them run another tap so that we have our own shut-off separate from uh the, you know, Gable Inn. But for now, that's just capped off and not functional. We still are joint with Gable Inn. What, uh because the sidewalk needs to get torn up in order to run that into our building. Well, if we're gonna be carrying up the sidewalk, then we should be making it handicap accessibles for voting and other things in there. And so we're getting an estimate on doing that. When we tear up the sidewalk, we'll finish the, running the uh water line. But it was just a bad service line. Yeah. Which shouldn't cost the city anything, which will all be paid for by the property owner.
All right, moving on to discussion on action on parking in the row for longer than seventy-two hours right-of-way. More than seventy-two hours without moving. Uh this is another one of mine. I understand the principle behind it. The seventy-two hours is not typically practical for most people who are actively utilizing their right-of-way for per for permanent parking or who's gonna go tagging the chopping wheels to make sure that they're moving every seventy-two hours.
Well, I don't think we need to uh the chopping wheels, we just need to look at the weeds growing up underneath the cars.
I agree, I agree, and uh there's been, we sent four letters, four letters this week.
Yeah.
So um those are going out and uh on on the common practice. But the seventy-two hours for somebody who, you know, that's, they park in front of their house that long weekend, they don't move their car, we get around to take it, or let somebody complain about it.
And how do you know that they moved it around the block and came back and parked in the same place and nobody saw it?
So the ordinance says seventy-two hours. And uh we can strike it completely out of the ordinance. Uh we can change it to five days, uh seven days, uh fourteen days.
Seven seems appropriate, but that's just my.
I think somebody could be on vacation for a week.
Or two, or even two.
Well, after a week, they're gonna have to have somebody move their car.
The real issues are things like uh the trailer or the uh house trailer or whatever it is, uh down there at Broad and Maxwell that has sat there all summer and sat there most of last winter. People who have two-wheel karts that they park, you know, flatbed uh karts. That they park in the right-of-way and leave for a year, like uh up north where you used to live, uh on the north side of uh Perry Robinson's property.
Western school.
Yeah, and we just have a lot of people using the right-of-way for parking things and the whole purpose of the uh ordinance was to make sure that to uh that isn't, you have it. And the whole purpose of the ordinance was to make sure that, uh, that isn't, you have it. Now, that's kind of why, plus the vehicles that have the weeds growing up on them.
Three foot tall.
Yes. We, we have it in the ordinance. We either change it, or we eliminate it. Uh, but having it there and not doing anything with it isn't right.
That's wrong, yeah.
And if weeds grow in that, that's a public nuisance, so that's handled in a different department. Not necessarily.
The point, the point is...
Still, there's some parking.
So what does council want to do? The mayor's recommending seventy days? I know the trailer that has the car on it, just down over here on the corner. That's a nuisance. I mean, that trailer doesn't have a license plate either, the car. I mean, there, there are a few other cars that are sitting in the right-of-way of flat tires.
Yeah.
But who knows if they've been there for seventy-two hours? Pretty easy to tell just by driving around.
Right.
Is there some...
I don't hear any further action, so we'll move on.
So we will enforce the seventy-two hours?
Yeah. We're gonna stay with the seventy-two.
Your recommendation's a week? Regardless if they pay attention, the seventy-two hours are a week. We still have to do something that's not...
Or we get rid of it completely?
No, no, no.
I think we need it. So we need to be uniform in our enforcement. There's a black Kia shortly after school started, um, right to the west of the greenhouse there at school, south of your place, that backed in and sat there four days and then finally moved it. Well, must be somebody owns it on the west side, I don't know. And now it's been sitting there again for four days in a row. Come Friday for football and homecoming events, that's kind of being an abusive situation, taking up a public parking space when you know it's gonna be busy over there. Can they pull it in the driveway? I don't know. But that's another example. Either we have to ticket that person, or... So even if it's a week, they're still gonna be there.
I have a pickup...
So the parking and school parking?
Out on the street. It's, it's street, city parking officially.
I have a pickup that I park partially on city property on the south side of my house. And I use that pickup maybe once a week. So, yeah, I'm sympathetic to a, a longer timeframe. But if it stays seventy-two hours, I'm gonna move it every seventy-two hours.
Well, there's a white suburban that comes home periodically and it doesn't move all weekend. And I'm not gonna move it, just because it's seventy-two hours.
Well, weekends are forty-eight hours, so you still have seventy-two.
I'm just saying you lift along weekends.
How long a weekend?
So let me add to this question. If after, after seventy-two hours, we go to the work of having her send a letter, which takes two more days to get to them, and then they don't answer it. This is a traffic violation. You don't send letters. You write a ticket. Okay. How about just tow it away?
Well, I mean, that's more difficult.
I don't know. I mean, Iowa State says, we're gonna have a football game on Saturday, and if your stuff ain't out by midnight, I know that there's fifteen tow trucks that are lined up at eleven fifty-nine and just started going in there and just start taking. You know, seven, you got seven days. Then you gotta rent a letter, or you're gonna put a ticket on there? I gotta, I gotta write it, write it, have a ticket written. I mean, the mayor can write a ticket, Tony can write a ticket, the sheriff can write a ticket. A traffic ticket, uh, a parking ticket is simple to do. I can't do it, apparently, but it's simple to do. Oh, quick get rid of it. Sorry. And so, five-dollar fine, uh, and if you don't pay it, it becomes a ten-dollar fine. And if you don't pay it, you don't get your license, your vehicle registration renewed until you do pay it.
What about the vehicles that already...
And then it still sits there until next year. Uh, if it doesn't have a registration, they don't move it, uh, they don't come in and pay their ticket, then we can certainly go after it as a junk vehicle. So, I mean, there's other things that we could do. Our, our tickets are pretty simple. They're simple. You give me a ticket, and then five dollars, ten dollars, and I, I wait all year before I have to go up there and re-register that thing. And then you'll pay my ten dollars and then re-register it, huh? So then it's gonna sit there all year. No, we tow it. Oh, now you're here to tow it?
Well, yeah.
If it's...
Tow it right away. Get it done. Get it over with. Get done with it.
Well, towing, uh...
Does it add the expense of the property owner?
Absolutely. You go get your car. It's over at the, it's over at the lot. I've been told by Tony, who used to have a towing business, that, uh, when you authorize a vehicle be towed, then you are also picking up some liability. Because any damage that happens to the vehicle is going to be the responsibility of the entity who off, who ordered the tow. So...
Once we take it into possession, it becomes our problem.
So you're right. It's easy to do. It's just, I'm not sure, but I wanna do that for every vehicle that's... Okay, so those two vehicles have been sitting down there for all summer.
Months.
How many tickets have they written?
None yet.
None yet? Okay, why? Okay, that's a good question. Why? Why not? So then, by now, if there were tickets written, they should, we should take the responsibility and get them out of here. I think if a ticket's, maybe better than, you know, if a ticket is issued, you have no more than twenty-eight days or thirty days before it's towed. Yeah. Again, I'm giving you a chance to figure tickets and move your...
How does, how does the DOT, uh, or the Highway Patrol handle it on vehicles?
That's a good question too, because I've seen them sit there for a week. With an orange sticker on it saying, "I liked that." And then you go buy it for it another week and it's still sitting in the ditch or on the side of the road. But yeah, how do they view that? I think once they put their sticker on it, uh, then there's a certain... There's a certain way... Certain period of time. And then they turn it over to a towing company, and the towing company, when they get out there, they get out there.
That's forty-eight hours for the towing companies to do.
Well, and you could certainly do the same thing. We issue a ticket to... Put an orange sticker on it? And if they don't take care of it? The way they do it, we zero it, is not just an orange sticker or a piece of thread saying, you know, they actually got a sticker and put a date on there, so you can see how long it's been sitting there.
Why don't the orange stickers that they were putting on have a date on them?
They might, but it's like written like this.
Yeah.
You know, whereas the other one says, "Ten, eleven, hold." Yeah, with a big black magic marker or whatever, you know, but, but if we've been crying about cars and stuff so long, stuck there right now.
A motion can be made for an adjustment from the seventy-two, seven days.
Yeah.
If it has been sitting there for seven days, we take it. And then the property owner has thirty days to remove personal property off, or personal property off the right-of-way. If it is not moved in thirty days, we will tow your property.
Fortunately, I don't pay you to give them the whole money.
What if they need to rent a storage unit?
Or come up with the money?
Or come up with money to move. I think, I...
I give it on thirty days. That's quite...
Thirty days is a lot.
I mean, that's like an eviction. Just eviction for thirty days.
So the ordinance currently says that they could be there for seventy... That you have to move it within seventy-two hours. And your proposal, your motion, is that, uh, it be seven days instead of seventy-two hours.
Yes.
And that we add the process that, um...
Any authorized person can write a ticket?
That a, a traffic ticket, uh, if it's not moved within seven days, a traffic ticket shall be written and the, uh, which is a five-dollar fine, and that they will be given thirty days to remove it, uh, or we tow it.
Yes.
Thirty days from that seven days.
From the end of the seven or included in the seven?
Doesn't it have to be at the time the ticket's written?
Yes.
At the time of the ticket. At the time of the ticket.
Thirty days from the time of the ticket.
Okay, thirty days from the time of the ticket. So there's no, the only notice that they're gonna get is when the ticket's written after seven days.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
And I suggest we buy three-inch fluorescent orange green, whatever color stickers, and when you put that ticket on there, you write the date on there, so we put a permanent... So you have to take a regular...
They're right in the middle of the drive.
On the car, yeah, out the window.
Should we get those printed? Sheriff's office should have a resource for those.
Yeah, something. I mean, you can just get regular three-inch stickers. Today's the day. You need one, you can just print one.
Is that an effect today, or can I have help there?
We have to amend the order. So they're gonna, they're gonna take...
Second offense, same as first offense?
Well, there, there would be, uh, so, so...
So it happens again, then, same story?
We write a ticket after seven days and they move it. And then it comes back and it sits for another seven days.
Another ticket, but then it's a ten-dollar fine instead of...
No, no. Ten tickets are five dollars.
If they keep moving it after seven days and get a ticket and pay their fine and move it again, they're within the ordinance.
Yeah.
They can have as many tickets as they want.
We have four tickets a month. They go to the local department.
Yeah.
Does he guess all that?
Yeah.
All right, so this is five dollars.
We clear, clear the motion, so seven days cite, shall cite, and they have thirty days, roughly, days citation. Is that right?
Yes.
And just that, that only applies to the vehicles parked, it was free. It doesn't apply to illegal parking, uh, or any of the other stuff, just that one.
Further discussion.
It's gonna cost us more, and manpower is five bucks a night.
That's a good question. I think that's a state law.
Is it?
I think the parking ticket amount is set by state. You know, the legislature loves to put handcuffs on cities.
So this is different than a snow ordinance violation, then?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause my grandson, I hit seventy bucks in Nevada.
Yeah.
Seven, zero.
Snow ordinance here is twenty-five, but I'll, I'll check and see whether or not the parking tickets, I'm pretty sure that's state law.
Do we want to consider including that thirty days of towing will be at the owner's expense?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Would that require an amendment to the motion, or is this just part of the discussion?
Parking and, parking and permit is on the title. I think that if the board or the secretary agree to it, then that's parking motion. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the parking fine. Parking ticket in Iowa, parking division penalties and fees. Now, I don't know if this makes, but, um, illegal parking is seventeen dollars.
Oh.
Illegal parking in a seed preferred parking area, twenty-five. Illegal parking in a service or official vehicle zone or tow zone, thirty dollars. And loading zones, twenty. Looks like we haven't been keeping up. I'm sure we haven't.
We've been paying to get our ordinance that day. We aren't getting this.
So I suggest that we move the, amend that order, or amend that motion to say...
The maximum allowed?
Or fifteen dollars. What's the code you're looking at? Um, that's a good question.
Looking at three twenty-one point three five eight, there's nothing listed as far as...
All I did, Steve, was ask how much of the pardons are given in Iowa.
Oh.
So it came up those, um, there's a lot more, but... Well, I'll look it up. I'll look it up. Okay. See what I can find out.
This one, one three five eight. Oh, there it is. Two sixty-one.
Three sixty-one?
Local authorities made by ordinance for parking vehicles. That's not what I want. Booster fifty-eight covered the actual parking, standing parking law, but does cover anything with costs.
Do we, there goes generic language that says the maximum law by state law, which then we wouldn't have to change, and anytime state law changes?
That's something that we should ask Iowa qualification. That's their main link. So I can do that when I get the language put together.
Thank you.
For council action, I have a publication and council action.
All right.
Okay, we got it.
Oh, any further discussion?
Okay, whose second is that? 'Cause I lost completely control.
I did.
Megan did, yes.
All right, Steve?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Morton?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Uh, discussion and action on corrections on legal documents from the court of law. Is this from the attorney?
Yes. There's a, he's got a motion in there.
What's going on there? What's going on up on the street? Apparently, at some point in time, the city transferred or vacated the, the, the street and transferred the thing to the adjacent property owners?
Yeah, about twelve years ago.
Because I don't, because I don't remember.
Whenever they closed up the, under the bridge, they filled it in?
The bridge, it was actually... The city decided to get whole, rid of the bridge because it's on par. We didn't want the... We didn't want responsibility of it anymore, so they decided to go ahead and vacate. We thought we went through all the process. We thought everything was done.
So you vacated McCone Street from like, just past Prince's driveway, or at the time, David McCone's driveway?
Well, it was a big mess. McCone Drive is not really a street. It's an easement. It's another one of those.
Right.
So when we vacated it, it went back to, we split it between the two. We found, later found out, well, just recently, when Prince went to go, he wanted to survey it, found out it was never recorded. So we went to record it because we still had all the paperwork. You guys passed it so that the prints was on the paperwork. Went up to record it. County came back and says, "Nope, it's not twenty..." County came back and says, nope, it's not twenty-some feet, it's thirty-three feet. So, now we have to go back and redo that part of it. But he's got a thing here, three thirty-three feet, and then we're changing McCone.
Yeah.
Prince's address to South Street. Yeah, so it was a mess.
Yeah.
We thought we were done a long time ago. At that point.
And our attorney is recommending that we do this in order to resolve issues that we created years ago.
Yeah, because we, we don't know whose fault it was that it didn't get, because I thought the attorney was supposed to be doing the recording. And I think they thought I was doing it, so.
Usually, it is the person who is giving the deed does the recording, not the person issuing the deed. And so, we shouldn't have had to re-record it. And since all we were doing is vacating the use of road, so that we're vacating a road to which we had no title. I don't know why we would be doing a deed anyway, but the attorneys.
Well, and in this case, they, they were talking to Story County too. So, between Story County and the attorneys, we've now got this fix in place.
Yeah.
To get everything straightened out.
Because it was screwed up the first time, we had to fix it. And will the mayor be authorized to sign the corrected deeds and associated paperwork as required by our attorney?
Second.
Further discussion? There you go. Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes. Yep.
Discussion action on appointment of DPPA contract.
Okay, what that is, is actually for you guys to allow me to go on and look at license plates, they've changed it. They have this new thing where they, we either have to pass a resolution or a motion stating someone has, has the ability to do it.
And is it appropriate that only you do it? Or should we have separate logins for both clerks?
You can do that too.
We don't do it a whole lot, so having one would be sufficient, right?
So.
That move that the city clerk, Deb Hayes, be appointed the person to be contacted for, or to contact for driver privacy protection information.
Is that a second, Lauren?
Yep.
Step all over.
Mine.
Further discussion?
Wish you. You better, you better be quicker.
Lauren?
Yep.
Megan? Doug?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Resolution on moving salaries and police in the city for the fiscal of twenty twenty-four.
Will approval of the resolution?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. The, uh, is there a minimum wage requirement?
Seven dollars and seventy-five cents an hour or something like that.
How much?
Seven seventy-five or seven ninety or something like that.
I, I just didn't know what it was, I thought it had gotten raised to ten dollars or something.
California.
Uh, so.
No.
War defense.
All of our minimums, for all of our salaries meet the minimum?
Yep.
We're in good shape. The, uh, so, we can only have temporary help to do summer maintenance, which I guess is mowing, or snow removal. Uh, we can't have part-time help do anything else. Is that correct?
The auditor never said anything.
Summer maintenance? Well.
No, some of that.
And that would be outside work, I was thinking about what happens if we went to hire some school flunky to come in and help scan documents.
She's a flunky.
I think a council resolution could make that happen.
We can, we can do another resolution stating, or we can add it to this one.
Well, would we pay them the same as a part-time librarian or a summer maintenance person?
If you have to, or could it be part of your forty hours?
It, it might be, but if we have to pay somebody, I, we don't have a slot for that in this list. And we certainly could add, uh, part-time office work. At eight twenty-five.
Part-time office clerk.
Deputy clerk, office clerk, yeah.
Well, not deputy clerk, we already got Carrie, she's the deputy clerk, I'd do office clerk.
Part-time office clerk at eight dollars twenty-five cents an hour as a temporary, it's even a blank. Something. All right. So, I move that the resolution be amended to add that.
I'll second that one too.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on, amend it?
Amended.
Yeah.
Further discussion over there? There you go. Doug?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes. Does it quit and tag that?
Almost. Um, council mayor reports? Steve?
Uh, in, well, now the weather's gotten better, I've been doing more walking and I keep seeing.
I've seen you walking, that's good. You walk way down over there.
Yeah, and I keep noticing inlets, uh, all over that I didn't know we had. Uh, I think we should, uh, direct, uh, our public works people to go around and inventory the location of all of our inlets and identify, uh, their size and type. So that we can then, uh, figure out not only where they are, but where they go.
Where they feed into.
Right.
What are they?
Water inlets?
What, what do they look like?
Storms. Sometimes it'll be a little.
Like a dome?
A bit of, some are just flat.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes they're flat, the one down the second street is this vertical white pipe down.
Yeah, or lawn there too.
Yeah, which has a lot of different ways.
Okay.
I don't know of any map or any inventory that we have, I think it'd be a good idea. Uh, and that staff should be directed to do that inventory. And if we need to do that as an action item, then I would ask that it be put on next month's agenda.
Also maybe now.
Okay. The, we already talked about occupancy of campers and trailers in the right of way. Uh, but also I've had a few sitting on private property with people living in them. A few years ago, we had discussion at the council about whether or not we should have an ordinance that deals with that. I believe as a council, we decided that it wasn't worth the effort. Uh, I've gotten a complaint, uh, again about, or I have received a complaint about people living in campers on private property. Is it still in the opinion of the council that, uh, this is not a city issue? Their hardship, meaning their house.
Are they remodeling something?
Remodeling or they have a.
Damage or something?
Water damage or trees or storm damage, I mean, that makes a difference to it. But if they're just living there and cousin Eddie's moved in, that's a little different.
But sometimes it might be a hardship where he doesn't have his house.
Cousin Eddie lost his house.
I, I don't believe we have anything in the ordinance now that deals with it, we talked about it a couple of years ago. And, uh, decided not to do anything about it. So, I'd be more than happy to, uh, tell a person to complain that those council people just don't want to do anything about it.
Is it that big of a problem that it needs to be in ordinance, city?
Matter of fact, that's my question.
Yeah, is, I mean, really, is it that big of a problem?
Yeah, we have, we have the people down by the park that have been living in their trailer for a couple of years now, right?
He moved. I was gonna say, he's got his own house now.
Oh, okay, and the trailer's gone?
No.
Oh. All right, if it's not a problem, it's not a problem. Uh, the other, uh, issue that's not on listed here is the watering of trees, we got a grant for twenty-some trees. Uh, we've signed a contract that said that we would water them with five gallons of water every month for the first two years, and then water them appropriately after that. I asked Tony if, uh, he's been watering them, and his answer was, uh, when I have time. Which is not.
Doesn't require.
Be the requirement of the contract. Jody earlier tonight said that, uh, part of becoming a tree city, city is to have a maintenance plan, uh, which if we then either make part of the ordinance or we make a, uh, work assignment, uh, we would then have to have some way of tracking and following up. Did they get watered? We put three trees up in the cemetery, have they been watered? Uh, we have twenty-some trees in the park, I mean, we, we, if our, if we comply with the contract, it need to be watered. If we expect to, uh, have the warranty valid, so we don't have to replace them at three hundred fifty dollars a piece, we need to water them. So, how do we keep track? And, I mean, we can just accept, uh, the word, the people doing it that they did, and that's fine, but we need something.
I think it's a sign-off sheet.
Log.
Log, basically, free water.
And they need to know which ones are.
We need to know. We need to know where those trees are.
Yeah. To go see.
I've seen one down here, I wonder. Every place he had to check for his little shop, you know, but that's. All right, some type of log off, I mean, that's all he was doing, logging.
And just a check mark, uh, and you're done. They've been using the, uh, rural water attack truck, is that what it's called?
Right.
Uh, because, because it has a three hundred or five hundred gallon tank, which needs, if you have twenty trees, you're doing five gallons of tree. That's about a ton of water. So, it takes something substantial. Uh, so I think they have a, a piece of equipment that allows them to do it, but it's, uh.
So, I'll have, I can have Tony write a, a sign-off sheet, if I can get a map of the locations, so that we can document those on that sign-off sheet, and we can make that happen.
I can do it.
Thank you.
Go with Lauren because I need her copy.
Are they scanning?
Uh, status of existing nuisance complaints, I think, I hate, we don't have any complaints, we only have complaints.
Told you it was a Friday.
It was a rough day.
It was a right day.
You're fine.
That and all the roads, we've got cars that are constantly in rows.
Uh, fall, we put complaints on hiatus because it was winter time, they couldn't do anything about it. And I don't remember, uh, the spring picking them up again or this summer. And so, we're getting into fall again, and, uh, we're back in the same boat that we were last year. Uh, but it's gonna get, the weather's gonna get too bad, uh, for them to be doing anything in the wintertime. And I can't even remember whether we've made progress on any of them or not. So, I think it'd be a good idea to, uh, send out the nuisance complaint list, and everybody check theirs and see if there's, uh, something that should be done before the weather comes, uh, bad. I know that I've received a complaint again on Yums, uh, so there's some out there. That's it for me.
Lauren?
Um, I talked to Deb briefly on this subject, on how to make my resignation, um, an easy transition.
Don't sell your house.
That's the easiest.
None, none of you.
Geez.
It's, it's, it's kind of dumb, so, but I want to make it easy so that we don't have to have a special election and do all the things and cost the city money. So, I think we came up with a date of ten thirty-one as my official resignation, as I'm moving on November fourth.
And November fourth is before the election?
Yeah, it's before.
Yes, seventh is the election.
And so, uh, the official resignation letter, uh, would be on the November, uh, council meeting? We would receive it.
You'll receive it October.
You said it would be October thirty-first.
Right.
She gets the letter.
I have a summer letter and have it in the agenda for the October meeting, with an effective date of October thirty-first.
Uh, okay, and then we have a certain, oh, forty days or something like that? Which means that we should, we should know.
I don't know.
Who was the, uh, top, who, who ran for office, who got votes? And if there are more people who ran and got votes, uh, we could go down the list and offer it to somebody.
A person who got.
Or we could take the top one of the list and say, you can, you can start in November.
So, with the election coming up, we can't just put it on that.
Pardon?
That's what I thought.
We're already paying for the election coming up. We're already paying for the election coming up.
Yeah, so.
Except for her term is not us.
Yeah, my term is.
It's like you, you took over for Charles Robertson.
And finished his term, so she would be, somebody would have to finish out her term and then run.
What, what she's doing is just leaving two months early. She's running away from home two months early.
Two weeks.
No, it's her, she's not up this year.
Yeah, she's not up this year.
That's why.
That's what I'm saying. So
That's what I'm saying too.
Would keep filling in for the rest of her term and then.
It's too late, it's too late to get it on the ballot, isn't it?
Yeah, I talked to him when she first said something and no, it wouldn't be unless she quit way before.
Wait, but since she's quitting October thirty first, they're voting November seventh.
I told him at the time that she was quitting in November or December and she's, they said no, that she couldn't be on the ballot. Yeah, I said even though we knew that she was quitting.
Okay.
So I've already asked questions.
If she had quit in September, then maybe it could have been put on the ballot?
It would have had to been July.
She resigned today.
They do.
Easy.
She would have had to quit in July.
In July, okay. It, it takes time between right, for them to uh publish the ballots, right, and so.
Isn't it that somebody is gonna have to finish out her term? You don't want everybody on council coming off at the same time.
No, they got to finish their term.
We're gonna have to appoint just like you did for the mayor.
There's a four year term and there's a four year term and there's gonna be a two year term.
Yeah, it would have been a two year term if we had elected somebody.
And so then when whoever was voted in at her place, then their eye would be back up.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. So somebody has to finish out her term. Yes. We can't just have an election in November to fill her seat because they have to finish her term first and then she's up for election.
That way this
No, no.
Scattered, so that she added.
If she would have quit before July and we could have put her on the ballot, that person that took her place would only be two years.
Two year term.
And then you, that person in can would be off.
At the same time.
Mm-hmm.
So you have two more years yet.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And.
You had a four year term.
I'm done.
You're done. You have the four year term.
I'm done.
Doug, that's what you done? Or you have two years, yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
It's the three of us all came on.
Three of you, yeah.
Yeah.
And possibly four.
And so if there are only three people who take out, have, do you know if anybody's taken out papers?
I've had three people take out papers.
Only three?
Nobody's returned them though.
Okay, so let's say three people take out papers successfully. Uh, then uh they're going to all get seats. And as a council, we would either have to dig up somebody uh who's
Do they have to be breathing?
That's kind of what I was.
I mean, I mean.
He said dig it up.
Uh, we'd have to find somebody for the fourth position, but if uh as if there are, if somebody is doing a write in and so there's a fourth person and they get significant votes, then they can always pick them for the fourth, but you know, there may only be two people that successfully take out papers for the three positions, so. But you, you said that you'll put it on the October meeting of the effect at the end of October and uh the November meeting is when?
Okay, no, it's the sixth, the day before.
Day before the election.
Yep.
I wonder if it would be worthwhile to delay that meeting for a week.
No. It'll be the thirteenth.
Because that way uh we would know exactly what the vote is.
Originally, I was going to be able to potentially finish the, at least the term, but then I got, it moved up and schedule ran quicker, which is good.
But you still have to live there.
Oh, yeah, I'll just. You know what?
Hey, you know what? You got a camper?
I do a camper right now.
You park it in the right way.
You only need twenty dollars a month.
Every seven days.
That's right.
We got you, Tony.
Twenty dollars a month and you park your camper in there.
It could be in just another Palm Beach suburb.
Yeah.
Where you are elected in one area and live in a different area.
Yep.
And just say, well, I literally live over there.
You just need an address.
Possessancy, yeah.
Has somebody uh bought the house already?
My house?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like for dinner, that whole day.
You all live in fifty-five man, you're perfect here. Fifty-five man.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Lauren, do you have anything else?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not.
There's still a meeting going on. Keep, keep it moving.
Uh, the disc golf group has been chosen to apply for the major SCCF major grant.
Oh, great.
So that will
What group, I'm sorry?
Disc golf.
Disc golf.
Okay.
Uh, we did not receive any funding from Prairie Meadows, which was super discouraging, but um we are going to turn around and apply for the major grant, which is an invitation grant. We felt really good about it and that's up to twenty-five thousand. So that is due September thirtieth and we will, um actually, it's just a copy and paste of Prairie Meadows. So super simple and fingers crossed.
Yeah, which means that we would have fifteen thousand about to come up with?
Yes, and I have matching funds from um the renewal committee as well. They, they, I think they granted two thousand and fifty to match out of a um, I might have that number wrong, but they agreed to match two thousand and fifty, I believe. And I have, I can have proof of that, so.
So another two K, so that still leaves about twelve K.
And there's some major sponsorship grants as far as advertising opportunities on signs, so that's another route that we're willing to take. That, that part of my job is not ending October thirty first. I'm gonna see that.
So are there associations or anything that like, so let's say we're putting a golf course. PGA would say, hey, thanks for putting a golf course. We want to help you. Here's five thousand dollars. Are there associations?
Yes.
Stowed it.
Yes, and I have two gentlemen working on that aspect of that project, but they're gonna be a lot better than me, so.
I mean, they're the ones that were at the meeting, they're the ones that know.
Yes, yeah.
I like that.
Good. Good stuff.
Done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nothing.
Go ahead. The owner occupied rehab grant. Remember, we've got fifteen thousand dollars and we have three people.
And we have to have it all done by the end of September?
Correct, so.
Yeah.
I did call our third, two of them are done. Our third party, I did speak with him today. It's roof repair and he has it completed, but he still has some fascia and a couple of pieces of siding here and there, little things. But he has done all by himself uh this last little bit and he's no young person. But uh he kind of patted himself on the back and I said, consider yourself another pat on the back. So that should be done. Now, Deb, I didn't get back with you. We don't, we originally thought we were gonna have the building inspector come over and say, yes, these three projects are done, looks like they did what they should. Did you hear something that said we don't do that? Is that what you were saying?
No, um, when I was talking to the building inspectors about Mary Coats, um, he said that they didn't need to inspect it because it was all stuff that was repairs. It wasn't.
Wasn't new.
So nothing new, right? And the other two, did he indicate?
Roof will be repaired.
So it's all.
Well, I'd already gotten a um a job, a final on the one over here.
Okay.
They'd already gave out a final, yeah.
Okay.
And then Tongue is the one that just finished this. He will let you know by the twentieth that he's completely done. He said, I should make that. Uh, do we need, is there enough?
He needs the receipts and stuff to be
Okay.
Because I have to have something to prove that he spent.
That he spent.
Yeah, all right.
I uh, would you be able to uh uh walk around the outside, look at it, say it's done?
Well, is that enough, I guess?
I looked at the roof. The roof is new sheet goes on, so.
Yeah.
I would say.
But you had to take it, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that was a successful venture.
Yes, it was, all three.
Step one, all three did follow through when we got fifteen thousand with the hopes of more coming in the future as this program grows. Um, the other thing, and I'm trying to look out for Deb here on this one. I picked up my packet last Friday and we had a whole bunch of reports that weren't in. It doesn't take any longer to do it Thursday than it did to do it today. This morning I came in, well, there are a few more. And tonight, that's done, here's a few more. Now Deb is printing three different times doing this. I, I would love to have our employees or anybody that has reports get them into her by the end of the day Thursday, so once you print Friday, it's one of them. I would like to see that happen.
I was all ready to come in tonight and uh make a motion that uh all the reports that were not in the packet to be deferred to next month. But I
Well, just out of respect for Deb and her time.
Absolutely.
I think there's no reason that it can't be done. Now, if there's a huge exception or some blew away, busy, that's a different story. Those are the two things I had.
I think Deb asked that they be on Wednesday before, right?
Or even Wednesday, yeah.
So I mean, don't you ask for them to be at the Wednesday before?
Thursday at the latest.
Thursday, okay. Anything not in by Thursday, I'd say to us, don't act on it. Act on the.
And then I'll get a grumble about it because they didn't get those before.
Well, that just means it's a, it's a bad look on our group and it affects their budget.
Anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Uh, you also had uh moving those parking signs to the edge of the road, didn't you?
Well, I asked, I relayed that thought. I think people didn't see those signs that are the ones that park.
The ones that are hanging on the fence.
They're hanging on the fence perpendicular to where you, you're driving down the road. You see them here? No, they're over here.
What, what are we talking about?
Just around the football field, the, the, no parking signs.
I, I think we should order new signs that say no parking this side that has arrows both directions and they should be put on poles there at the edge of the right of way. Uh, we're not gonna get it done by this Friday, but uh
It's a much better option because then it's our responsibility. Right now, what's up there is what the school says.
The school wants those signs.
So it's our street, so let's repay what we want. So if we want parking, no parking on the north, east and west, northeast and south side, then we need to put the signs up to say no parking.
Yep.
So and our ordinance needs to reflect.
Yeah, so they can't say enough that it's not in the ordinance.
So
if you're gonna have a parade, I've seen City of Maxwell has said no parking for this.
For temporary.
For temporary use. You want to just do that for Friday night?
Yeah.
I mean, just.
But, yeah, we can always do that.
Put a barricade with tape.
We'll do it.
For, for
Ball games.
Well, they can still drive on, they just have parks.
Yes, yeah, just for ball game.
With the barricades parallel to the road.
Oh, all right.
And then Ball games for now and then get signs when we can.
Yeah, the, the same signs that we put on the main street. Temporary no parking.
No parking this side eventually.
On Sunday mornings.
Yeah, don't say between signs. That's confusing.
I'm sure that was Tommy. Pardon? I asked that, tell me for the temporary.
Temporary no parking.
Then we can add it to next month's agenda for the permanent parking at maybe four minutes. Anything else? No?
Yeah, 'cause I print out the signs anyway.
Okay, what's the status on tree removal?
Oh, good question. I've noticed several stumps that have been freshly cut up there on Baldwin Street.
The bank too, is that the bank?
I don't know. No, they're more.
They were north of the bank the other day.
North of the bank, but I'm just wondering what their status is.
They're working on it?
Huh?
They're working on it?
That's good, but.
Keep it going.
I didn't know how many.
They don't report to me.
I'm gonna report to Tony then. Have Tony report to you.
I think uh it would be appropriate for uh Tony to uh submit a report from the contractor that uh says how many they've done and how many are left to do. It could be a very simple three line report. That could be twelve trails out.
Thirty to do or whatever.
Yep, now, the contract that we issued uh was for stump removal and cleanup also.
Right.
So it might have come back to do stumps, but they're all nice and flush. I mean, it's not like we got a three foot stump, so.
Can I ask that you get the original report to Tony so he can follow up?
Okay.
That way he's got a baseline. He can verify what's, what's out, what's in. Anything else?
And this was seventy some out of the hundred trees? So the trees in the park?
It was forty-six.
Forty-six, forty-six.
And this one's in the street, not one in the park.
Yeah.
Or cemetery. That's it, all I've got.
All right. Uh, for me, uh we can get the community vision grant submitted. Jody said she hadn't heard back on that yet. I pointed her the point person over there. Uh, we have, while I was doing that, I had somebody come to me with the idea of applying for another grant which we could utilize to pay for whatever plans come out of the community vision. So I submitted a invitation application to Bear Corporation for basically whatever funds, because they have an unlimited, unlimited grant opportunity. You have to be within fifty-five miles of the Bear operation, which just so happens to be in Huxley. So uh I submitted for whatever our plans come out to be out of the community visioning that Bear jumps in on as a grant program or whatever that project comes out. So hopefully I'll hear some back, some of me back out of that. Outside of that, that's all I have. Consent agenda. A little approval?
Second.
For discussion. Derek, wait, wait, uh. Who can?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
See?
Yeah.
Lauren?
Yes.
Lauren, is that?
No, I was absent. I was on vacation.
Right. You're okay.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I turned my phone on.
I should have done.
Ooh.
No, there needs to be a second. Second.
Anybody good enough to sign the petition? I'm got mine here. If anybody would please, if not, I'll find one.
Absolutely. Crashing around.
For he wants to go for his term.